Lee County Board of County Commissioners, a special meeting will convene. It's January 7th. It's past 9:30. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Just some comments for the record. The only item that we will be discussing today is CDBGDR funding. No other items that we're going to listen to today. You'll have to wait a couple of weeks from now to do that. I just want everyone to know that if you give me a public comment card, unless you're going to talk about this specific topic, I'm not going to be able to hear you today. With that in mind, I'll turn over to our county manager for opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to consider Lee County CDBGDR funding allocations, and I'd like to ask Ms. Jeanne Sutton to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right. To begin the discussion today, I wanted to start with a recap of the original allocations that were designated within the Lee County CDBGDR action plan. As you might recall, the HUD action planning process required us to evaluate unmet needs data and make allocations that align with that data. However, as the program progresses and community needs change, we do have the flexibility to amend these allocations to address those changing needs. HUD has also provided us flexibility to request waivers for certain program requirements. So as the board previously directed, we have requested a waiver for the low mod income set aside requirement to be reduced from 70% to 50%. We have also made a waiver request to allow for us to use CDBGDR funds for buildings of general government purpose. And we have not heard back on those waiver requests yet. However, we are optimistic about their approval and do anticipate to hear back from HUD in February. One of the reasons for optimism surrounding those requests is our current funding award amount. So as you can see on the screen, we currently have approximately 82% of our CDBGDR funds allocated to eligible projects or awarded to eligible projects. We are currently leading the cohort of other CDBGDR recipients from our 2022 disaster cohort. I do want to point out that this 82% does include allocations for HMGP funding, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Those projects have not yet been formally awarded by the Florida Division of Emergency Management, but we do consider them committed or awarded to projects. So now we'll take a look at current uncommitted funds. Just to recap where we're at with each of these projects. All the planning funds have been committed, and those projects are currently underway. They're either in procurement or undertaking planning studies as we speak. Public services related to the Unmet Needs Long-Term Recovery Group is also underway, and all of those funds have been awarded, including awards to 11 small nonprofits who are providing case management and other services for survivors of Hurricane Ian. Behavioral health funds are currently reserved for the completion of the behavioral health planning study, which is currently underway. The first phase of that is complete, and the rest will be done soon. And then we'll be able to determine the behavioral health services that are needed within the community. All single-family housing development funds have been committed and awarded. Agreements are being drafted for all of those projects, and we'll talk a little bit more about those in a bit. Home purchase and housing rehabilitation assistance programs are currently making awards to eligible applicants as well as currently doing repairs to eligible homeowners' homes. We do anticipate that the individual housing rehabilitation program will be slightly underspent by about $50 million. But at this time, we do not recommend making reallocations of those since those awards are still in progress and we're not quite sure what the final number will be. The voluntary residential acquisition program did not receive any viable applications. So at this time, there's approximately $56 million available for reallocation from that project. Multifamily housing programs have approximately $85.4 million available for reallocation, and there is a balance of $6.6 million in critical infrastructure and public facilities, bringing us to a total currently available of approximately $148 million. So there's a few factors to consider when evaluating the award of these remaining funds. First, of course, is the LMI waiver that I mentioned a little bit ago. That will take our low mod income benefit requirements down from $775 million to $553 million if approved by HUD. And that could allow us greater flexibility to award urgently needed projects that don't necessarily have a lower moderate income benefit. Project timing, of course, is also a valuable thing to consider. HUD does set a deadline for which urgent need projects or those that don't have a low mod benefit must be awarded, and that deadline is May 2026. There's also an overall grant expenditure deadline of November of 2029. To that extent, or to the extent that the board wants to consider infrastructure projects, those are long-term projects. So it may be beneficial to consider those sooner rather than later given the grant expenditure and commitment deadlines. The other thing to consider is the $144 million mitigation only set aside. As a reminder, these projects are those that do not have a Hurricane Ian tieback but do have a benefit to mitigating future impacts of future storms or disasters. With the current HMGP commitment of $131 million, we only have about $12 million remaining in our mitigation set aside. So to review projects in the NOFA process that occurred earlier of last year, there were, for public facilities and infrastructure, we released a NOFA with $229 million available for infrastructure and public facilities projects. 65 applications were received and totaling $914 million in requests. For affordable housing development, $200 million was released through the NOFA process, and 69 applications were received with more than $1 billion in requests. Obviously, with all those requests, not all the projects were funded. So there are 31 remaining applications, eligible applications in public facilities and infrastructure, and $472 million in requests. Keep in mind that mitigation set aside that I just mentioned, about half of those infrastructure and public facilities projects are mitigation-only projects. So there's about $200 million that have a tieback to Hurricane Ian and could potentially be funded outside of that mitigation set aside. For the housing NOFAs, there are 22 remaining eligible applications totaling $362 million. Just a reminder, we have awarded $265 million to 19 housing developments, which will produce nearly 2,200 new low-income housing units. All right. So we focused on some big-picture items thus far, but there are a couple of specific recommendations that we want to make today. One of those is switching out the Red Hibiscus Single Family Development Project with the Cape Coral Homes Project. Both are undertaken or will be undertaken by Habitat for Humanity. The Red Hibiscus Project has encountered some challenges being compliant with CDBGDR requirements. Habitat fully intends to continue pursuing that project just outside of CDBGDR funds, given certain land use and site acquisition requirements that CDBGDR funds come with. It is recommended that we switch that out for the Cape Coral Project. All right. On the public facilities and infrastructure side, there are also a few projects that are ready to go and being recommended. Two generator installations. This will actually be the match for HMGP funds for generators at Tortuga Elementary School and the Lee House Sports Complex. Both were used as shelters and distribution points during Hurricane Ian and provide an excellent leverage of HMGP funds to make those projects possible. We are also recommending a Constitution Circle and Haggy Drive Bridge replacement. These bridges are in the Harlem Heights and San Carlos communities, both of which are considered by HUD as low- and moderate-income communities. So that helps us to meet our LMI set aside and also replaces these bridges, which were experienced damage due to Hurricane Ian. There's also a current project, LCEC Chariot Estates, which is going to seek a budget increase. We will come back to you with additional details on that once we have worked with LCEC to determine that exact increase amount needed. With that, I am available for any questions.
Any questions? No questions. You may ask your subsequent time.
Thank you.
I think it's probably Jermaine, just to do public comment first. Is that okay with everyone?
Sounds good.
Great. All right. My first speaker is Andrew Cribs.
Morning. Andrew Cribs, on the Housing Group for the record. Thank you for making the time to consider the Wava Colonial Project, one of the top-ranked and most impactful projects in Lee County. If not awarded today, this crucial community will be lost to luxury rentals. As the seventh-ranked overall CDBGDR multifamily development project, Wava Colonial will deliver 358 units in a strategic location close to jobs and commercial growth, providing much-needed housing for workers and their families. It is on the border of Lee High Acres, where many working families live, but no CDBGDR dollars were awarded. Since I last spoke about it, Amazon officially announced its plan to move forward with its first mile distribution facility that will employ over 1,000 people within one and a half miles of this community. Wava Colonial maximizes the benefit to Lee County and its hard-working families. At 358 attainable units, adding just this project to the ones already awarded will increase the total number of units produced by 24%. If you just add this one deal, you would increase the units produced by 24%. It only needs $56,000 of CDBGDR funding per unit, which is less than half of the funding per unit already awarded. It is extremely efficient. I'll leave you with this. A survey of nearly 2,000 surrounding units charged rents of nearly $2,200 per month compared to $1,200 per month that we will charge at Wava Colonial. That's $1,000 per month, which puts food on the table, gas in the car, and kids in childcare. It's $12,000 per year, which makes the American dream really possible. Multiply that rent savings by 358 units, and you get over $4 million back into the economy. That's economic impact. So this one deal provides 24% more units, twice as efficiently, and creates over $4 million in rent savings towards economic growth for the local economy. With a well-capitalized local developer leading, that is return on investment, and that is maximizing impact. That moves the needle in building a stronger and more vibrant Lee County. Please consider awarding Wava Colonial today. Thank you for your consideration and for all you do to make this the best place to live. And Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lana Colwell.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. I am a board member of the League of Women Voters of Lee County and the leader of its Affordable Housing Subcommittee. We would like to commend you and your staff for what is and has been a most complex and challenging task of awarding the $1.1 billion CDBGDR funds. Those residents of Lee County whose properties were lost or damaged as a result of Ian are most grateful for your efforts to award those funds in the most equitable yet compliant way while focusing on those whose income is at or below 80% of the area median income. And apparently, your work is not yet over, given today's agenda. According to the excellent informative report provided in the agenda, the funding awarded thus far will result in the development or rehabilitation of 3,031 housing units, both multifamily and single-family in Lee County. The total amount of awards for those units is approximately $320 million, or 29% of the total amount. The original amount awarded for those projects was $400 million, leaving approximately $80 million yet to be allocated. There is an additional $68 million to be reallocated from various other programs. It is the sum of those funds, or 148 million, that is the focus of our comments. Considering the scarcity of affordable housing in Lee County prior to Hurricane Ian and the loss of more than 5,000 homes as a result of Ian, the League is urging you to allocate those unallocated funds for additional affordable housing, that is, housing for households earning up to or at 80% of the area median income. In accordance with the original requirement of the CDBGDR funds, 70% rather than 50% of the total $1.1 billion should benefit low-to-moderate income households. Thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns and to reinforce the need for housing for those in our community who are spending more than 30% for their housing needs. Therefore, we look forward to celebrating the final awarding of the funds and, more importantly, the groundbreaking of new affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Skip Mitchell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Skip Mitchell, I'm a volunteer at Goodwill. I'm a board member, and God put me in this ministry to help the community here in Lee County. What we're asking for is money for the disadvantaged and the disabled. I don't think there are very many, if any, other programs to help these people, and we need this. The state of Florida has said Southwest Florida's Goodwill is one of the top 10 nonprofits in our state. The state itself has allocated $3.5 million. Mr. Golisano has donated $5 million towards this, but we need this from you to keep it going and complete this project. And all your consideration would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marcus Gottson. Good son, sorry. My bad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, County Attorney, staff. For the record, Marcus Gottson, Lee County Housing Authority. I rise this morning to ask the board, while you consider the reallocation of CDBGDR funds, that you consider reallocating a small portion of multifamily rehab funds to what I would call an RFA, a request for application, between $1.2 and $1.5 million for small projects. It's hard for the small projects to compete with the larger projects. You just don't have the leveraging dollars. And there are many developments in this community that could benefit from such a small allocation of funding. I also make this request from a personal perspective for Lee County Housing Authority because last year, we took possession of a seven-unit development on Central Avenue. We've got 44 families ready to move in to that development. It's in desperate need of rehab dollars, and a reallocation of these funds in that manner would go a long ways to housing these sampling families. And I'm sure there's some other developments in the community that would apply as well. I put this request in writing, addressed to the Assistant County Manager Glenn Slayer. I copied Jeanne. I got this letter to Glenn yesterday. He and Jeanne called me yesterday, and I apologize for the late delivery, but I was dealing with pneumonia over the holiday, and so I wasn't working for a couple of weeks. But I want you to know that Glenn called me the same day he received this. We discussed it yesterday while he was noncommittal. Jeanne and Glenn seemed to be open to the concept. So as you think about reallocating these rehab dollars, I would ask that you consider a smaller allocation for these small developments. I know the large developments are what catch everyone's attention, and we have some large developments as well. But these small developments need housing assistance, too, to rehab these units and get families in them. And that's my ask this morning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, you're not allowed. I'm sorry. John Nado?
John Nado, President and CEO of Goodwill for the record. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My purpose today is to update you on the 27-acre site that we have over on the Enterprise Zone on MLK and Interstate 75. To refresh your memory, we have under contract at below-market rate eight acres of that for low-income disability housing, working with our partner, Mike Allen Revital and Carfor. We are very grateful to be awarded our Renaissance 2 project, and we look forward to providing all the wraparound services as that gets built and developed over there. The other 19 acres that Goodwill's retaining is supposed to be for our new campus project, to move our headquarters there and all of our facilities, get them all under one roof. And then that will allow us to provide the wraparound services for that adjacent disability housing. These projects, I believe, are unique in that they address the most underrepresented, underserved population in our market, and that's people with disabilities. This is really true and evident, and I can speak from experience because we are probably, we are the largest provider of disability housing in this area and most likely in the state of Florida in general. And we have over a five-year waiting list for over 300 units for people with disabilities. And that's something that's really neat in this community. We went through the CDBG infrastructure process. We felt just a couple of points short for our original ask on the new campus. We've had some subsequent meetings with the county and the city to find out what we could do a little bit better to modify our request and make it more possible to get funded. So we came up with the following. We restructured this development into two phases. The first phase is going to be really focused on the things that are most important to the county. They will include an emergency shelter for people with disabilities, warehousing for emergency supplies and services, our outlet store that can be converted to a food distribution center during an emergency, and of course, our Community Resource Center, where we can do hundreds, if not thousands, of FEMA applications and other things during an emergency, which we do on a regular basis. We added a generator to make sure we could operate. We importantly reduced the request from $28.2 million to $18.5 million. And we have completed our development agreement with the City of Fort Myers, which was a major milestone for us. We look forward to continuing to incorporate recommendations from the staff to modify the scope of this Phase 1 so that meets your requirements as best to our ability. I would also point out that we're a highly-leveraged project. We own the property. We have the $3.5 million allocation from the state. We have the generous $5 million contribution from Tom Golisano. And very importantly, we already meet the LMI criteria. We have no need for a waiver on LMI. When emergencies happen, Goodwill's one of the first people to get called. We roll our trucks. We have our people. We have our warehouses. We distribute food. During Ian, we passed out over a half a million dollars of vouchers to families in need so they could get clothes or food or whatever they needed to get them to the next step.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration.
No problem. Ben Nyberg. Just to remind everybody, there'll be a green light, there'll be a yellow light, and then a red light. The yellow light, you have a minute left, just so when you get that opportunity. I don't want to cut you off. I'll let you finish your sentence, but I'm going to cut you off.
Sure thing. Good morning, County Commissioners and County Staff. Happy New Year, and I hope that everybody had a nice holiday break. I'm here on behalf of Residences at the Pines. My name is Ben Nyberg, and I'm representing Accruva and Skyway Housing Foundation. I'd like to just begin by acknowledging and thanking County staff for all their hard work in 2024. As it relates to CDBG allocations, I think everybody understands that this was a very hard and complicated and difficult task. So hats off on being so thoughtful and working with the development community so closely in getting much-needed affordable housing off the ground. So much appreciated. Thank you. I just wanted to discuss Residences at the Pines for a brief moment and give staff, along with the Commissioners, a recap on this project and the value that it brings to the community. Residences at the Pines is a 160-unit elderly mixed-use development located in the heart of Cape Coral. All the units are set aside at 60% of area median income or below. And one-bedroom rents are projected to be about $958, which is about half the rent comparable communities in the area. As it stands today, and to the best of my knowledge, this is the only project in Cape Coral that's fully funded and will have 100% of the funds in place if awarded today. So the capital stack would include $20 million in CDBG, paired with noncompetitive housing credits and $23 million in already-committed HFA bonds from Skimby County. The committed bonds are a critical source of funding that allows our project to move forward immediately. I also want to mention that as far as design goes, schematic designs are done and complete. And so if staff and Commissioners decide that this project will be moving forward today, we'd expect permits in hand before the end of summer. Our architect and engineer is Kevin Beslow of the Beslow Design Group. He's been working with folks in the area for over 35 years. And his team will be expediting the permitting. They've built over 5,400 apartment units in the area, and he has deep roots and experience in Lee County. Another item I wanted to underscore is the geographic distribution of awards for the CDBG multifamily allocation. If you consider the Tier 1 and Tier 2 scoring, that staff, at least, he'll notice that there's a large disparity between projects awarded in Fort Myers and in Cape Coral. There were 16 developments in Fort Myers with only two in Cape Coral that were ranked Tier 1 or Tier 2. Both of those projects in Tier 1 or Tier 2 were Phase 1, Phase 2 of the project under discussion today. So we believe that at least one project should be funded in Cape Coral, and it should be Residences at the Pines. We're building 32% more units than the next project behind us at 120 units with the exact same amount of money. So if you're looking at the subsidy, 160 units versus 120 units versus the next, you know, we're using the subsidy more efficiently. And so in closing, I just want to say thank you again for all the hard work, the consideration, and the time. I appreciate everybody's willingness to convene for a special meeting today, and I hope that the Commission can proceed with our project. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Patricia Zimmerman.
Good morning, Lee County Commissioners and staff. For the record, my name is Patricia Zimmerman, and I am a member of the Affordable Housing Committee for Lee Interfaith for Empowerment. We're an organization of 15 faith-based congregations across the county. We believe that affordable housing should be available for all working people in Lee County. Workers should not be cost burdened by having to pay more than 30% of their income on housing. And as you heard from one of our speakers earlier, the impact, the economic impact on the whole county is amazing if they are paying more, if people are paying more just for the rental. The grant money that Lee County receives from the government is a great opportunity to develop more affordable housing. Please remember that 70% was allocated for affordable housing development and preservation, and now you're looking at reducing that to 50%. We are very concerned about not taking the affordable housing needs of our county very seriously. We are grateful that the 13 applicants that have already been allocated money are going to be building more than 2,000 new units. But like us, I'm sure you are aware that many more housing units are required. What is the impact if Lee County does not have affordable housing? If we don't create affordable housing, we will lose the workers who keep our hospitals, our small businesses, our restaurants, and our hotels operating. They will move to other counties where they can afford to live and raise their families. You have the power and authority to allocate the available funds to build more affordable housing. We urge you to move forward today to fund all of the additional projects that your staff has already vetted. And we also urge you to prioritize the processing of permits needed so that developers can move quickly to complete their projects. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marcia Ellis.
Thank you. Excuse me. Can you get the document camera? I hope you'll just hold on just a second. I just have a little bit of data I would like to share. Good morning, Commissioner's staff. Marcia Ellis for the record. And I am sharing data that is from the Schimberg Report on Housing. And this data is really important to inform moves forward. This particular report is from 2023, and we're eagerly awaiting the new 2024 report to further be able to inform data-driven decisions and for the public to also get a handle on what's happening with affordable housing. And so what we're able to see from Lee County And so what we're able to see from looking collectively at this data compared to other counties is that truly the need for housing in the eighty to one-twenty percent range is in your largest urbanized counties. And in particular, the data from Lee County indicates that our need is below that eighty percent, particularly at the fifty percent AMI and below threshold. So that's where continuing to allocate the funds that were originally set aside for affordable housing is very, very important, because this is the way that we are able to get affordable housing into our community in that demographic. All right? Live local is looking more at the working. We have a deficit of housing for low-income folks in our community, and that means that children aren't being fed proper meals. That's what it really looks like at a kitchen table level when people are having to spend so much money just to put a roof over their head. Those impacts are far, far reaching into the future health of our community. I also want to say that once we're able to address this shortfall in affordable housing, we need to look at policies that will put more mixed-income provisions into future planning. So when new developments are coming online, that we have mixed income required as part of those future developments, and we don't have isolated pockets of luxury-only communities coming online. Or we have apartment buildings like Los Palmas over by me that was originally supposed to provide some affordable housing, converted to luxury housing when you put up a hammock and call it an amenity or ring doorbells. This is disingenuine. We need a commitment in this county to address the true affordable housing crisis and allocate these CDBDGR funds for the purpose that they were intended, as promised, to the people of Lee County. I appreciate the efforts that have been underway to destigmatize affordable housing and the courage that it takes to look head-on and say, you know, it may not be as profitable, but we are morally and ethically bound to make sure that our community doesn't discriminate against people who may have a disability or may have some other burden that they need to overcome that limits their ability to be a high-dollar wage earner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jerry Kruger.
These are also submitted online, and I wanted to make sure that I could put our copies as well for the Commissioners. Paper copies, and I wanted to.
I'm Jerry Kruger, President of American Community Developers. We're a national-based housing developer with over a hundred affordable housing developments in eleven states, including here in Florida. We're a top ten-thirty developer in the United States. We submitted multiple applications for the CDBDGR. Although none were selected to receive funding, we are asking you to consider one of our applications here today. That's called Cape Seven Twenty for the portion of the uncommitted funds. Cape Seven Twenty is a hundred-unit project located in Cape Coral, just southwest of the corner of Pine Island Road and Nicholas Parkway. Cape Coral represents twenty-seven percent of the population of Lee County, yet no funds for multifamily projects were awarded within the city limits. Our research indicates that there's still a great unmet need for affordable housing in Cape Coral, with the most proximate comp to our property having rents over two thousand dollars and a vacancy rate of only three percent. Our proposed rents average less than eleven hundred dollars. That's a delta of nine hundred dollars. And in our business, that is, shows a tremendous need for affordable housing. For this project, we have all zoning, site plan, water management approvals. They have all been received. Architectural drawings and engineering are ready for permits. They're complete. We received sufficient tax-exempt bond cap authority from the CTA to finance the project, and we are committing on this project for duration of perpetuity. This will always be affordable housing. Approval of this request is the final funding piece to move this project forward. I'd like to briefly tell you real quick about a property we're involved in just down the street in Naples. It's called George Washington Carver. The property is located on land that's owned by the City of Naples, and we approached them a few years ago. They had to decide, they had to approve the sale. Naples Daily News wrote an article about this, and they said Naples leaders have to decide today if they want to take a leap of faith to work with our company since the city owned the land. After the project was successfully completed, an editorial was written in the news that said, "When council members chose a new steward to run this landmark project, they chose well. How refreshing, a developer that makes a promise to public officials then follows through. Promises made, promises kept." We like that. ACD is extremely confident that we can successfully complete this project, and we look forward to working with you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha Davis.
I'm Marcia Davis, the Executive Director for the Housing Authority of the City of Fort Myers. First, I'd like to say thank you so much. We're so grateful for the opportunity to work with the CDBR program thus far with multifamily rehab and two new construction projects. So thank you so much. We are so fortunate and really appreciate it. I did want to mention today on the list of unfunded projects, we had three, but I really want to focus on Fifty-three Hundred Summerlin, which is the top three, the less of the subsidy requested from the CDBDR funding, and that is for the replacement of Horizon's Apartments. That was damaged significantly from the hurricane, and then hurricanes subsequently from that as well. And we are currently in the process of relocating all the residents because of the failing buildings, the failing infrastructure, all the water intrusion issues that we're having. So we've gained HUD's approval for demolition of that entire development. That's on the Boy Scout in Summerlin, so it's on the tip on the Summerlin Road. There will, our development and our application was two hundred and twenty units of affordable housing. We have leveraged other capital funds to garner the local support from the city and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to go along with that, and we think it's a very viable project. We just paid for our site permits, so by right, we have all of our entitlements, and we're ready to go. And this is one of the projects that was severely damaged by the hurricane of how we garnered, you know, the CDBDR funding in the county. So we would look and, you know, appreciate in consideration for that project. I think when you look at, they're all great projects, and I know I'd hate to be in your shoes, but they are all significantly, you know, will improve the county, but I'm requesting that Fifty-three Hundred be looked at as well. Thank you.
Willie Joe Shotmiller.
I've heard a lot of good things, and we do need very affordable housing for the very low-income. Marsha hit the point that there are a lot of people with disabilities, myself included. And I'm here today to give funding for the Suncoast Community Center. Everybody knows that we looked at some property years ago, and finally, we were able to make a deal on Harden Case Road, right by the community center, taking food to them. I talked to Charlie. He's been over to the place and to see what we can build. I talked to a couple builders. I talked to the lady that took Johnny Street's place as a councilwoman. She's an architect. And to see what we can do, and that's not about that. The money that comes in needs to be rotated, and it needs to be locked in for eternity. I bought that place for the future generations, our children, so that we're not going through this. Now, I could be very angry because it was just robbed in Suncoast at the bus stop, but, you know, these people, they need to be drug, you know, there need to be rules, right? But we need to care about all people, and that's our ethic and moral duty, you know? So Suncoast Alliance is looking to build in their area, not too far from Walmart, and the whole county. I mean, we need to look at the whole needs of all of Lee County. So with that, and another thing is the bus system to Suncoast, they let people off on the road, and I've noticed if it's nighttime, the Suncoast bus that's up on the road, there are people with walkers trying to catch that one forty back to there. So that's kind of a risky thing that could cause an accident with some people with walkers crossing that street with somebody at night not too long ago. So that's another thing. With that, I wish everybody a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Last card that I have in my possession is Michael Allen.
Michael Allen, Revital Development, for the record. Happy New Year. Hope everybody had an enjoyable holiday break and a Merry Christmas. Thank you again for scheduling the special meeting during our winter break period. It's just another action that further expresses your dedication to the Hurricane Ian recovery. I'm here today to advocate for a couple of our remaining applications, three in particular. Ava Square, a hundred and twenty-one units of senior housing to be located in Cape Coral, and then two supportive housing projects. One is Tiltin Court, seventy-two units with over fifty percent of the units dedicated to individuals at risk or experience in homelessness, and the other one is a sixty-unit subsequent phase to a previously awarded project, the residence adjacent to the future Goodwill headquarters. During the evaluation committee review process, in staff's recommendations, there was a preference for permit-ready applications and projects submitted for permits with comments. I think this needs to be considered to stay true to the application process, and again, as Jeannie mentioned earlier today, there is an urgency and priority to some timing there. That's what classifies a Tier One. There was eight Tier One applications. We were one of the remaining two. The other one is Southward Village, Phase Three. My request would be to fund those two applications to follow with that process. There was a comment earlier about only two Tier One and Tier Two, Tier One and Tier Two, applications in Cape Coral. That was inaccurate. We were the only Tier One application in Cape Coral. We have permits, building site, stormwater management, all approved, impact fees and permit fees all paid in full. Highest score in application in Cape Coral, the only Tier One application in Cape Coral. Just also previously balancing the housing demographic targets for consideration, there's fourteen applications awarded funding, including the Sandville and Sanibel, four of which are senior housing, so less than thirty percent for senior housing, which is one of the most vulnerable populations. Geographic distribution, I'd like to see some of the hardest-hit areas get some funding, generally speaking, the Barrier Islands due to the, but due to the structure of the application process, there wasn't a lot of applications there because of the funding preference and the requests per unit. You know, there's good application there as well. And then just local preference, you know, you know what we're going to get with us and other developers, the Housing Authority of the City of Fort Myers, Lee County, and other developers that have historic and current market knowledge and construction data. So we're confident in our numbers. I think that's important as well with the potential upcoming tariffs and inflation, being mindful of realistic and reasonable applications. So thank you for your time and consideration today, and thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards, but if anyone would like to speak, raise your hand. Yes, sir. I'll go from my right to my left.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael. Homeownership is an American dream and a backbone of any community. Fifty million out of one point one billion dollars was allocated for homeownership. And staff just showed you a record where out of the fifty million hibiscus was taken out, that was nine million dollars, and the Cape Coral project was pushed forward, which is five million, which is four million, so five million dollars is left. So out of one point one billion, less than four percent was allocated to homeownership. I'm asking you, if homeownership is an American dream, and if homeownership is the stability in the community, in your deliberation, can you please allocate more funding to homeownership? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone that would like to speak on my right hand side? Anyone? Raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll go to my left. Left? Come on up, sir. Come on up, sorry. I didn't see you in the middle of the aisle. I'm wearing glasses, too.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Amy Yearsley with the City of Cape Coral. I'm here today in support of staff's recommendation to fund the Habitat for Humanity Single Family Cape Coral Project, of which the city is a partner, donating fourteen lots for that particular project. With regards to the reallocation of funding, the City of Cape Coral did not have any projects that were awarded within the jurisdiction during the multifamily NOPA process. Should the Commission desire to fund projects in the city, we are supportive of this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Michael Contorno. I'm the President of the Windsor West Condominium Association here in Fort Myers. Our community was built in nineteen seventy-two in the original pre-planned development of Park Windsor over at what was known as Broadway Extension. We've had several of our homeowners who have applied for funding after Hurricane Ian that was not approved by our, you know, our insurance for the individual units, and many people have been denied simply because they are condo owners. These are homesteaded. Our community is made up of vulnerable adults and minorities mostly. And they have asked me to come to speak to you about looking at allocating funds to condominium owners in this area, because our insurance as a carrier will not ensure inside the individual unit owners for some of the projects that need to be done, and I would like you to consider awarding some of those funds to condo owners, please.
Thank you. All right, Mayor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Very good to see you this morning. Happy New Year to each and every one of you. Just want to come and say.
Put your name on the record.
Sorry. Richard Johnson, Mayor of the City of Sanibel. Thank you, Kevin. Just want to say how much I appreciate the work that you all have been doing on the CDBGDR. I know the recognition for the projects, a couple of projects out on Sanibel, the Spoonbill Project, as well as our municipal building, and going through the waiver process and getting those funded. Very much appreciate the work that staff has been doing, very much appreciate the work that you're doing. It's difficult. All these projects are good projects, but just a final reminder, remember where the devastation really took place, our Barrier Islands. So thank you very much for that. I'm here this morning to commit to whatever you need from us to help get this done, and we look forward to working with you into the future and seeing these projects come to fruition. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the Commission. Gentlemen, thoughts? Anyone who would like to lead?
I'll lead.
Mr. Greenwell.
Yeah, I know this is tough. We've had so many projects come in front of us, and it's very tough to make decisions on which ones can move forwards and which ones not. So obviously, there are a few that pique our interest or whatever, and I would like to bring up the fact that Goodwill is such a part of our community. If there is any movement in the future, I would like to propose that we maybe try to look to help Goodwill out with the issue that they have on their project. So I would just like to bring that up.
Any thoughts on that?
I'd like to say thank you for the Committee getting us this far. It's been a long process over the last year and a half, and I hope we never have to do this again. Hopefully, there's no hurricanes this year. And I really appreciate the Committee's work on this and all the staff's work for this, and I support the staff's recommendations, what they've done. Like we allocate all the money for housing now currently. And again, supporting the Goodwill project and of course, all the infrastructure, I'm looking forward to supporting throughout. This is going to affect the Park Beach and all the islands that was obviously devastated from the hurricane. So thank you to all the staff and the Committee that worked on this.
Considering Commissioner Greenwell brought up Goodwill, just take a poll across the day. the day.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, unfortunately, I need to step out if we're going to vote on that particular project.
No problem. I'll just get some comments before we make a vote. Do they have to leave before their vote?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding that the Commissioner has a conflict of interest within the meaning of Chapter 112 due to the fact that his spouse, his law firm represents Goodwill, therefore he should not sit as part of the discussion nor the vote.
Okay, if you could step up. Yeah, step up. I do have a question. I just want, for the record, Mr. Galisano obviously pledged $5 million to this project. He owns a couple of my companies. Do I have a conflict?
Out of an abundance of caution, given that an argument could be made that your vote would inure to your special private gain or detriment, I would likewise suggest you recuse yourself on that matter as well.
I'll walk out. Thank you. You guys can go to breakfast or something. I mean, go get some coffee. Okay. Good morning. Vice Chair Cecil Penagroth will be running the rest of the meeting. County Manager, can you give us some direction now? Because we do not have an agenda for any type of action. So what action are you looking for the board to take this morning?
Yes, I'm going to turn it over to Glenn.
Nice chair. I believe they only need to be out for just the Goodwill part of the conversation.
Correct.
Right. So if we could just talk about the Goodwill, that'd be great.
Okay. So any other comments about Goodwill?
I'd like to make one. Yeah, you know, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Vice Chairman, that you said you were in support of the Goodwill project. And Commissioner Greenwell, I appreciated your comments too about the Goodwill project. I too have gotten a chance to meet with the folks from Goodwill. I understand they've reduced the scope, well, the ask anyways, and they've worked with our staff to really tailor the project to meet the spirit of the CDBGDR funding. And so I would be very supportive of helping to allocate some funds to them, especially since for this project, it already meets the LMI. It doesn't need an LMI waiver. So I would be supportive if you guys want to move forward with awarding money to Goodwill.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion for that?
That's why I was going to ask the County Manager, what action?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As staff, we would ask you to provide, either as a standalone motion or part of the recommended motion, however you want to do it, provide direction to staff to work with Goodwill to craft a proposal that could be awarded CDBGDR funding. To Commissioner Hammond's point, we have had some preliminary discussions. They're very amenable to making the project work under the guidelines that we have to adhere to. We just need to do a lot more work with them to bring back an actual proposal that you can formally award. And so if you want to provide that direction, that'd be terrific.
Okay, so we need to make that motion and take that vote while they're excused at this time?
Do you want to make that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment on the motion on the floor regarding the Goodwill project? We'll come back to the board. Any other discussion?
And just to clarify, the motion is to direct the staff to work with Goodwill, to craft a proposal that will be brought back to us in the future for consideration to be awarded. And I agree with that 100%.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Any objections? No objection. Motion carries. So now we can bring them back. Pete, Pete's got them, I think. Chairman, you can have it back down.
Thank you very much.
You fixed everything, so it's all good.
Mr. County Attorney, I know I wasn't here for the vote, but am I able to ask, was there a vote and did it turn out? If I'm not allowed to, I won't.
Yes, sir. The, Mr. Chair, Vice Chairman, the vote carried 3-0 to direct staff to work with Goodwill to formulate an application to be brought back before the Board of County Commissioners for approval or for consideration.
Great. Maybe Jeanie, you come up, if you wouldn't mind. I want to go back to your PowerPoint, because we have discussions and deliberations, a lot of charge. Thank you. And that award was $4 million? Goodwill?
Motion was to direct staff to work with them, that's a dollar amount.
But just trying to understand what dollars may be potentially still available.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So we don't know what that award amount will be. We've got to craft a specific proposal for you to award, but we anticipate it would be probably in the 15 to 18 million dollar range.
Okay. So the 85 million that was on your chart, we should consider at least 15 taken from there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just trying to find some guidance. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to the other small.
Just some comments of my own, you know, as an open, you know, first and foremost, thank you staff for all you've done, the committee members for what we've been able to do. I certainly asked to have a special meeting in December as well as January, and I can't thank staff enough for your determination in trying to allocate the appropriate monies as quickly as we can. The reason is twofold. One, it's great to be the recipient of $1.1 billion and never want to seem ungrateful. However, we did submit, when we were told of this verbally, you have to go through a process of submitting what your unmet need is. Our unmet need submitted was $9.4 billion. So there's still $8 billion left over. It certainly is my intention, I know the Commissioners, to go and advocate more for this community. I come from New York. Hurricane Sandy was a great example, where they were initially awarded $5 billion. They submitted an unmet need of $19 billion and ended up with $13 billion. So I am confident in the group of men that I work with, that our avocation can certainly result in some future allocations without a desire. I think it's also important, many developers reached out to many of the Commissioners, including my office, indicating that some of the projects, they were getting anxious as sellers. They wanted commitments. They wanted people to understand that they were going to move forward. So that was the other reason for the urgency, and I can't thank staff enough for the allocations that you've done. I did call for a special meeting at the November meeting we had. It was very evident that Cape Coral didn't have anything allocated to it currently. I've had conversations with the mayor. He certainly gave me his thoughts. We had a lengthy conversation. His preference would be for Habitat. His preference would be for senior housing and then affordable housing. He thought Cape Coral had enough units, but I think market units and specific purpose, whether it's disability, whether it's senior, whether it's affordable, are certainly different. And since they're already planned and permitted to be developed in the category of multifamily, to me, the silo that seems to be needed is affordable housing and certainly any type of senior housing, again, with limit of allocations. This is important to me. I think I'm the only person up here that's actually been on Section 8, so it's something that's near and dear to my heart. I've been very much involved in this program and trying to help since my days in Sanibel with community housing. It's the only area and only city that I'm aware of that has an active program to try to have affordable housing for workplace. So that's full disclosure. I was received a hand up, and certainly things have worked out better than I ever dreamed of. So those are my comments. I certainly would like us to see if we can find some funds for Cape Coral. We have a big area, but right now, between North Fort Myers and Fort Myers, 100% of the funds have been allocated to housing there. Sanibel, at the last meeting, we allocated $5 million. They still have some things and challenges in front of them. Make sure they're able to utilize that funds. But those are my comments. Thoughts, comments?
Can I ask just comments, questions? So anyway, I'm proud to be up here today on this incredible subject. I never worked on a billion-dollar project before. So, and you, the team has done a wonderful job, and staff and everybody involved to date. I'm very impressed with how challenging and how well-executed it's been handled so far. So thank you for all your efforts. I think a lot of good projects have been awarded. I understand, you know, I agree that Cape Coral, a lot of the things did seem to be kind of clustered together in the area that we were at. And I was only a guest in that meeting, the last meeting that you had with Race last day. So what I think Cape Coral should be served is discussed. I looked at the, on the mapping, the project that, the way that Colonial was something that caught my attention with the low unit count and the location of it. If it's seven or eight miles out on 82, that's a lot of traffic hours difference for it to serve east side of county. So I think that looks good for workforce housing and low rent for a lot of people that I know, employees and things that I think would benefit from that. But I would also like to, I want to make sure that we try to look at the infrastructure side of things as well as the housing things today with the money we have left over. I don't think we have to make all those decisions for infrastructure today, but people have been asking me about this on the trail for the last year and a half. Infrastructure is really important, everybody, and I'd like to make sure that we can handle what we need to do today that's appropriate and then still earmark enough that we can do a substantial benefit for the public. I'd like to see something meaningful for infrastructure for those of us that commute and live and work and play here, that we could think of something substantial and impactful that we could do that's some more immediate gratification that would really make a difference in people's lives with that infrastructure money. To see staff come back to us with something substantial on that is something I'd like to see. And then I would also, if it's appropriate, to make a motion for a specific item. I would like to see us consider the LARC project for the special needs hurricane shelter project. It's about $5 million, and that's a subject that's near and dear to my heart, as you know. And I would like to see if you would want me to consider a motion for that project. So I covered a lot of ground there.
I have a conflict on LARC as well. Mr. Galisano gave them $10 million.
Mr. Chairman, out of an abundance of caution, I would urge you to recuse yourself for the consideration of that matter, and be sure to fill out the proper ethics forms that we can assist both you and Commissioner Maluka with.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. I haven't heard a second yet.
So, Mr. Chair, could I clarify real quick? Is there, are you making an official motion, Commissioner Maluka?
So my other points were comments and considerations, points of discussion that we could carry forward possibly, but I made a specific motion for the item for LARC.
For LARC. So, okay, great.
Which is on...
So it looks like LARC is a $5.2 million request for construction of a new LARC facility. Is that correct?
So the way it was explained to me in their request, and I would like to see if staff can help me with this, the details of this, could you give them an outline of the project for the, I know it's a hurricane shelter for those with special needs to actually be able to reside there during an emergency situation?
That would potentially be part of the use, absolutely. And just to step back for a minute, our request would be similar to Goodwill, and that is provide direction to staff to work through the particulars of their proposal and come back to you with a specific plan that can be funded with DR monies. There were a few things in their original application that didn't square exactly with the program requirements. We think we can overcome all of those. We just need to work with them a little bit.
So when you said that required modified scope category, that's what you're talking about, some of these tweaks that we need to do?
Yes, sir.
No, I respect that. I think that's fair. And I'd be satisfied if that was revised the motion to that.
So the motion is to provide direction to staff to work with LARC on creating a proposal that could be brought back to the board for future consideration?
That would work really well for...
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
You second it?
Yeah, I second it.
Any other discussion for our call for public comment? Any public comment this time on the motion regarding LARC direction? Okay, we'll come back to the board. Any other discussion?
Say thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great organization. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Absolutely.
Any objection to the, objection? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Pete, you can bring it back.
It's a complicated meeting.
Sir, we have a motion and a vote, and we're back. Have it back.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo what everybody said about, thank you to the staff for all the hard work they put in on this. This is a ton of information to go through, tons of applications and documentation to go through. And I have to say, I have tremendous respect for everybody who's proposed a project. I mean, there is not a bad project in here. They're all worthy of consideration. They're all great projects. And so I do have tremendous respect for everybody who's met with us. You know, I know there are some things that were actually listed on the agenda as a requested motion today specifically related to awarding $4 million to Habitat to basically swap out the red hibiscus for some single-family housing in Cape Coral. Gentlemen, I'm very supportive of that idea. You know, somebody brought up in public comment the idea that homeownership is the backbone of the American dream. And really, one of the reasons why my family is where it's at today is because we were able to buy a house in Cape Coral at a time when homes were very affordable. And, you know, the equity that we built through owning a home helped us, you know, tremendously as a couple. And I want to give that opportunity to many, many more families in Cape Coral. So I think that's, for me, a very important one to support. You know, on the question of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the generators, I'm supportive of that. If that's, those are opportunities that staff believes we can take advantage of with this money. I think that's a good spend, certainly hurricane-related, and making us more resilient for the future. The bridge question, I guess I don't know enough about that to make a decision yet. It sounds like certainly two important communities who meet the, they were damaged by the hurricane. They meet the LMI criteria, but I'd love to hear more information about the 7.17 million for the reconstruction of the bridges. And then the LCEC program seems to make sense. I assume, once you guys finalize the LCEC ask related to Cherry Estate, you'll bring that back to us to approve?
Mr. Chair, ma'am, Commissioner Hammond, what we'd ask for on LCEC is just to grant staff authority to increase the award because we're talking about a very minimal amount of money. They did not include administrative costs in their application, and they've come back to us and said, hey, we can't really put that on the LCEC rate pair. Can DR reimburse this? So we're probably talking about a few thousand dollars there. So if it made sense, you could just authorize us to move forward.
Could you give us an up to or not to exceed amount?
Yeah, absolutely. If you wanted to say not to exceed 15,000, maybe, just to be safe.
Okay, so I would, yeah, I mean, I could approve what the motion has requested if we make that amendment, the not to exceed 15,000 on that. If it goes higher than that, I'd like to see it then.
Can you go to that slide that has the app that you have? Were you going to give us information on the details of the bridge that you asked for?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah. Do you want to start on the bridge?
Yes, absolutely. So regarding the bridges, Constitution Circle is kind of the main road in San Carlos Park. There is a canal that that small bridge goes over, was aging before the storm. Flooding damage in that canal area exacerbated that age that was already occurring. So replacement of the bridge will not only ensure that the structure of the bridge itself is maintained, but also help with any sort of drainage blockage or anything that may have occurred during Hurricane Ian. The same is true in Harlem Heights, the Haggy Drive Bridge. Haggy Drive is the primary road in Harlem Heights. That bridge connects it out to Gladiola. Same thing over a canal. Some drainage issue and flooding exacerbated an already aging structure.
So how would we pay for those projects if we didn't have the CDBGDR money available to it?
That is a great question. There are other grant funding sources that come out from time to time that we certainly pursue.
Yeah, Commissioner Hammond, typically that would be handled through the normal DOT process. So, you know, whatever funding sources we're using for these types of DOT projects generally would have to stand in for this. And since we don't have any available right now, this is a nice way to get these projects done immediately.
Any idea, like, where are these? Any idea, like, where these would fall on that list? How long it would be until we got to these? And this is a chance to potentially move up to very, it sounds like critical projects that currently aren't funded then through that?
These projects are not funded. It would be, I can't tell you how many years in the future they are. I don't think Mr. Price is here, but, but I know they're, they're farther out than we want them to be because of their deteriorated condition.
Okay. And then what pot does that seven point one million dollars come from?
Well, you have a little over six million dollars in the infrastructure silo right now, but, you know, as part of this process, like we've always talked about, every decision we make from here forward will essentially be a reallocation of available funds. And I know this board committed at the outset that we were going to ask HUD for additional flexibility so that we could do work in the more impacted areas, whether they're LMI communities or not. And so, you know, going forward, every time you make a decision, we will have to reallocate these monies between these funding silos, which was always part of the plan.
Okay, so we'll, if we, if we go ahead and say, yes, we want to do the, I'm rounding up, seven point two million for the bridges today. Is that coming out of the multifamily housing development pot, or is that coming out of a different pot?
Well, I think it depends on what guidance you give us here today, but that said, you do have fifty-six million dollars in the voluntary acquisition program alone.
So that could come, yeah.
It could come from there.
Okay, okay. So, so I feel comfortable then that we have the money to cover those two projects, and they sound like, you know, important projects for two communities that are very important to us, that, you know, obviously had a hurricane tieback to, you know, there was, there was damage, there was flooding, you know, obviously good projects. So I feel good about those two. So, so basically, I guess, all that to say, my comments are, with what the staff asked us at, with their requested motion, I'm good with those things for sure. And then open to having conversations about specific projects that you guys are interested in. I do like the, the habit that we've already established here, that we're going to give staff direction to work on the proposal and bring it back to us so that we can see. Sometimes I get a little nervous about awarding something right here on the fly the first time we've seen it, but that's, those are my comments.
So can we say, just for clarity, just for clarity, I'm just trying to make sure it's the four million dollars for Habitat, it's the two generators and the bridge?
And I like the LCEC Cherry Estates with that caveat.
Right, 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 the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, I think this motion, as it's written up here on the agenda for today, it was item one. I agree with that.
Okay. I'll second that.
That's your motion. I have a second on the floor. Any discussion? Any public comment?
I'm so happy to see DOT projects accelerated. Thank you.
Good afternoon, again, morning, Commissioners, Marsha Ellis for the record. So we've heard of some really important projects today, like the small bridges in, in heavily impacted areas. And we've heard from, from LARQ, the needs for special, a special need shelter, and certainly the need to coordinate to make sure vulnerable folks are protected in emergency situations. And, and how could one not support these projects? They're compelling. They speak to real need. They're very concrete. No one has a problem with visualizing what this looks like. However, we, we want to be sure that we're guarding the affordable housing, the funds that are available to develop affordable housing, and that we are chipping away from the enormous deficits that are included in the data that I provided you by email earlier today and provided paper copies on the record for each of you. And those, those are informed by the, the research from Schimberg. That we are improving upon the twenty-two hundred units that we have managed to create or allot so far from a billion dollar investment in our community, that we're improving that, that we're adding to the additional one thousand units that are being renovated, that we're not backsliding. We've got to be careful that we're not, we're not going backward because we're still continuing to get sea level rise impacting our coastal communities over and over again with four and a half feet of surge twice from hurricanes that did not even come anywhere, you know, near our immediate area. So we, we want to make sure that this investment is working to protect the most vulnerable and that we are not taking funds that could be coming from another pot on infrastructure or road projects and taking them away from housing, and that we remain committed to buyout of those vulnerable properties so that we're not constantly reinvesting over and over again where we know that there's likely to be damage and that the homes that are built to a higher code can benefit from voluntary buyout of those programs. That is really just good planning and common sense. We have to make sure that we're contacting the people who own those properties in good faith to, to try to bring those people on board and that we are giving at all of our willpower to try to make sure that voluntary buyout is viable, that it's attractive to folks in the community that are tired of experiencing having their properties wiped out over and over again. And so I want us to think a little bit about how does the reallocation of that voluntary buyout program incentivize people participating in the future, and what does that nexus look like for affordable housing? Because we're kind of mixing pots of money.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Can you come on back up? You know, I, I think, you know, what's really important, if you can go to the slide with the summary of the one point one. I think it's really important for everyone to understand that we are allocating funds in different projects. And the reality will be that we'll allocate the funds, there'll be projects that'll meet all the criterias, there'll be projects that won't. Just to digress a little bit, stack funding is a very difficult concept. I don't plan to understand it in the housing market, but I do work in a silo very similar to that, where many times you provide financing for a large amount of money, and there's multiple participants in it, and you need to fund the entire amount. So if you have eight components and it comes to a hundred million dollars, and one of the components pull out, or two, you don't do the project, and there go, the money is going to be reallocated. In the bond market, you know, I certainly learned through this process, there's not enough bonds available currently to do the products we have. Every year, the bond market allocates tax-exempt bonds to a particular dollar amount. You know, one of the things that I did, my due diligence in talking with Jeannie and Glenn, was to see how far we have been able to qualify and understand they have their full commitment. We're not able to say every project on this meets all the thresholds. So what's going to happen with this? They'll slide from item to item, and for no other reason, we might, I use the word might, hit a wall where there's not enough capacity to fund the multifamily type projects because there's not enough bond capacity. I am all for doing as many units as we possibly can, but I also have to deal with the reality is that there's only so many dollars available to make this stack funding work. These applications many times are asking for ten or fifteen million dollars on a project that is significantly higher, so they take R-15 with other pieces and make the project work. It also goes into an environment right now where we'll have project overruns, you'll run into delays, you run into all the things you do in construction. So the project could go over budget and then again, fall apart. I just want that clarity. I know there's a lot of anxiety. I think this board certainly wants to make sure we put as many units on the boards as we can, but we're going to have some just changes that are not necessarily to our doing and are outside our control. I just thought that was important for the record.
Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Just wanted to jump in, you know, party of the motion was to also give direction on any other projects that we were interested in. And I wanted to go back to your initial comments where you talked about allocating money to Cape Coral. You know, I share your, your desire, but I'm interested to hear what projects are you looking for, or what projects, you know, piqued your interest, do you think are good for, for the city?
Well, again, trying to understand, you know, when you cross over with, you know, an area like we do, where there's a city unincorporated, trying to understand that. And having talked to the mayor, the first priority I heard was senior living, okay, is what he wanted. So I'm in favor of Ava Square. To me, it meets the threshold, it meets what we need to do. It addresses that issue. It's Cape Coral. And we have a developer who, you know, obviously did something in the Cape, had ninety-one units, got sold out in three hours. So it's a track record. It fits all the criterias. It has the right score. So it checks every box. And when ninety-one units go for sale or for rent, and in three hours they're sold out, there's a demand with two-hundred-and-thirty thousand people that need senior or need affordable type housing. There's a lot of marketplace housing on, on the market currently, whether it's Cape Coral Parkway, the development there, or whatever, but specific silos of senior and affordable have particular elements. So that was my thought on the projects. I am a big person in understanding development. I'm a big person to understand a track record, and of course, the great information we have. It fits on the list. It's in the scoring criteria. We have a proven commodity. Those are my thoughts on that project.
Good deal. Yeah, I, I have learned about Ava Square myself. I think it's a great project. Certainly, there is a need for, you know, many seniors are facing tremendous inflation. They're already on a fixed income. And so as the area gets more expensive, I think there's, there's a need for affordable housing for seniors, absolutely.
And to comment on that, I, I agree with that sentiment. So many people were displaced in mobile homes that were, a lot of seniors. I mean, you know, a lot of eighty-plus-year-old people were displaced in affordable housing that they thought they owned free and clear and don't have a place to go. And I think that's a really important commodity and subject to take care of our seniors, so I'm glad to see that.
So, I mean, under, under the motion that I've made that's on the floor, that's been seconded, I could include in that motion that the staff worked with Ava Square to bring us back a potential award there?
How would we grade the second? Does the second agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to second on the floor.
Let me make sure that, Mr. Chair, if I may, is that Glenn, is there, Mr. Harner, Glenn, whatever, is that what you guys are looking for as far as direction on the Ava Square? What would you like us, how would you like us to package that up?
Commissioner, I think that, that's perfectly acceptable. That works well for us, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Are we trying to make a blanket motion today that includes all recommendations that may add five more things, or two more things, or no more things to it? Or are we going to do separate motions for each?
No, I, you know, I mean, I was...
Object that may be of interest to the board? I just, just to ask you, motion maker, is that the intent or the goal?
Well, I kind of think this is a good time if we wanted to talk about what else we want to add, because that's really party of the requested motion by our staff today is to talk about any other projects. We would like the staff to, you know, further investigate for us. And so I know Ava Square was one, and I certainly would include that direction in the motion that's on the floor, and I'm willing to make amendments. I want to hear from you all, what are you interested in, yeah?
I'm also just trying to keep cognizant of dollars. So we've spent some dollars. I just want to make sure that, you know, what do we have to spend? What have we kind of allocated? We did something for Habitat. We did something for LARQ. I just want to understand what potential is left over because in the conversation you're, I think there's consensus on the four or five items. I'm just not necessarily certain how much is left.
Right. And that's...
So I don't want to grab a, a project or two and go over.
That's why I think it's a, a good strategic move to go ahead and just give direction to investigate the proposals or work with the applicants to create the proposals and then bring those back at a future meeting where we can then say, here's the proposals, here's where the money's coming from, here's where that leaves us at the end, and we'll approve it once it's all been, you know, investigated and, and worked on.
So we can resift this chart we're looking at right now based on?
Yeah, that would be my vision. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Well, then, if I can add to your motion, then the projects with the lower unit cost match are attractive to me, and I would like to recommend consideration of the Way That Colonial and the Fifty-three Hundred Summerlin project, please.
Yeah, those two I think are good projects as well. So I'll, I'll amend my motion to include both.
And I'll upgrade my second.
Good deal.
Could I ask Jeannie or Glenn, based on what we've done cumulative, if we include those items, should we tap the brakes? Because we're getting close to the maximum. And we don't know how it all shakes out. That's all I'm trying to do.
Yes, sir, if I may. Mr. Chair, I, I think that's a great idea in terms of, you, you can certainly tell us, look at all of these specific projects and then give us additional types, you know, whether that's infrastructure, housing, whatever it is. Maybe keep it more generic past the specifics that you've already given us because, to your point, we're getting close.
Yeah.
So maybe just amended to include the balance for infrastructure review?
I would be supportive of that if that's what, yeah, I just, you know, the, the other thing I hope that you'll show us at a future meeting too is, so if we end up with, I don't know, fifty million or whatever, what does that get us in infrastructure? You know, is that, gosh, with roads costing ten million dollars a mile or whatever, I mean, is that going to get us five miles of road somewhere? What, what are we looking at? You know, I, I was looking at some of the infrastructure projects and, again, same thing, all very worthwhile projects. Just wanted to, would love to be able to see what that looks like. But yeah, my, my, my thought was, this motion's crafted really well by the staff, and party under that part of the motion now, hopefully, we're just going to help them focus in on a few so that they don't have to look at the entire list. They can focus in on a few that they know we're interested in, and they can bring us back something to fully approve in the future.
Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a quick question, perhaps of staff, if I might. With regard to the additional review applications that have been identified by the board, I want to be sure that none of those requests would jeopardize the goodwill funding that has already been approved by the board. And my point here is, given the conflict of interest of two commissioners, I don't want to give rise to an argument that your votes on these latter applications was somehow influenced by preserving the funding for the goodwill projects. So as long as there's more money in the bucket than there's project demand for, we're fine.
Mr. Chair.
So if, if I may, I, I understand your point. That's kind of what I was trying to do. You did much more eloquently than I did. But I'm just trying to say, okay, we approved four million. Great. We approved fifteen million. Great. That's nineteen million dollars, okay? We have approximately sixty-six left. I just want to make sure, because those are motions that have been made and move forward.
Right.
I'm trying to keep track of the dollars that are remaining and agree upon, and I think we're getting close to hitting up to the threshold. And I want to give staff the opportunity to bring this all back to us so we see the dollars and cents. We understand the priority in motions was Habitat was first, LARQ was second, this is now the third. We might need to...
Separate motions, yeah.
They're separate motions, and this one may need to be adjusted if we find something that we're not aware of currently. Is that sufficient to you, County Attorney?
Yes, sir. Again, I'm just trying to guard against the, an argument that one of your votes on a subsequent project was somehow negatively influenced by trying to preserve the funding for the goodwill project. And I know that's rather circular, but that's for the world I live in.
So we have a motion on the floor with the two amended projects that David referred to.
Yep. Mr. Chair, if it helps too, I'll, I'll restate the motion.
Wonderful.
Yeah, the, the motion is to approve the motion that's been requested by our staff, parts A, B, C, D, and E. And then under part E, where it says, provide direction to staff concerning any reallocation of program funding, in my motion, I would focus staff in to bring us future information about Ava Square and Way That Colonial and Fifty-three Hundred Summerlin, based on the comments of the commissioners today.
And then look at the allocation of the, most of the rest of that for infrastructure projects.
Exactly. And then as part of that conversation, right, bring us back what the balance is available money.
Direction on the balance.
So that we can give you direction on that balance, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's appropriate just to see how this all shakes out and then give further direction once we look at this in black and white.
It's very possible that in this conversation that staff has, maybe, you know, while it says requested twenty million, they might find out that somebody could, could deal with a fifteen million dollar, you know, and there's some, some room either way.
In the last comment on that, we did allocate initially some dollars and cents relative to some early projects that had deadlines for December. We might find out that one project may not have met the deadline. We did indicate if there was funding that fell through or some ability not to meet that obligation, we would certainly reconsider reallocating those funds because they didn't meet the requirement. I think that's going to happen in all this. I think you'll come back with things as we learn more and kind of just give us an update on the one point one, because allocating money is one thing, appropriating money is a second thing, and then obviously achieving your actual funding to make sure you can move forward with the project, because that's how it all falls apart. So I think what you did, Commissioner Hammond, is great, second from Commissioner Malika, but I think at this point in time... but I think at this point in time, I think we're probably of good cautions to tap the brakes, bring this back and do everything if that's okay with everybody up here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sounds good.
So I have a motion, a second. Any public comment? Close public comment, any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Staff, I appreciate all your time. I believe you have the proper direction. We look forward to see how this all, all the updates take place and we'll move forward with this. Thank you very much. Our meeting is adjourned.